Oh, you got the picture. That's great. He didn't see there's a picture of a face right here that was here. Good evening, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our special board meeting. And if I could have a roll call, please? Is that thing not working?
I'm trying to make sure it is.
We got it on there, though, right? So we're either way.
There it goes. Okay. Mr. Ballard, here. Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here. And pledge... Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You hear all this bass and tenor, and then you hear these two like alto soprano voices.
Yeah, about that.
Right now, we will have recognition of a special visitor, and I turn over to the superintendent.
Paul Fallon, we've actually, as we've discussed in previous board meetings, our goal has been, consistently been for the past couple of years, is to learn more about what the community wants from us and how we should most appropriately respond. So we asked Paul to survey our community, and now I'm going to turn over to you, Paul, if you'd be so kind to share the results of what you discovered.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Paul Fallon. The superintendent, Graham just told him. I'm a survey researcher, and I specialize in a couple of different fields, including land use and utilities. But one of my primary areas is education, as well as public funding that requires voter approval. So I've got some unique expertise and insight that I think might be useful in this case. For the next 20 minutes or so, I want to provide a brief overview of the survey results and then allow you to ask any questions that you may have about them. Let me jump right in by talking first and foremost about the process. This survey was done through telephone interviews performed by specially-trained opinion research interviewers. That is, they weren't telemarketers who were trained to elicit affirmative responses. They were data gatherers trained to elicit truthful responses. It was conducted by 400 randomly selected registered voters residing in the Lorraine City School District using a combination of valid residential voice over internet protocol and cellular telephone numbers. And the reason we interviewed people on cellular telephone this now is to avoid a coverage error that would be created if we just relied on, say, landline service, since a lot of households no longer have that. For 400 interviews, the estimated overall margin of sampling errors, plus or minus 4.9% or 5% with rounding, and that results in a confidence interval of 9.8% within which the results could vary, or 10% with rounding. That just means, simply put, if we asked on a survey, "What is your favorite topping on a pizza?" If 50% of the respondents said sausage, because of sampling variability, that number could be as low as 45% to as high as 55%. The interviews were conducted during the period of May 23rd through May 26th, so this is very recent data. And the data is stratified, so the differences in vital characteristics such as age, race, gender, and geography are all represented in proportion to their percentages of the district's electorate. And the reason we do that is to prevent over- or undersampling from in some way distorting the results. Due to rounding, not all the results are going to add up to 100%, and the data is presented in a slightly different order than the questions were asked in order to create some subject-specific modules. And unless otherwise noted here, only statistically significant differences outside the margin of error will be presented. First, let's talk a little bit about the opinion environment. At the start of the surveys, we asked some innocuous questions. There are a couple of reasons for that. First and foremost, we want to draw respondents into the survey by starting with very general subject matter and then moving gradually to more specific subject matter. We also want to bolster their confidence, their ability to participate by asking them easy questions. And despite that, and the innocuous nature of the questions, there is some probative value or something that can be learned from them. For example, we started the survey by asking respondents in the school district whether they thought Lorraine County was moving in the right direction or the wrong track. At the time of the survey, 36% said it was moving in the right direction. 49% said it had gotten off onto the wrong track. Now, just to give you some idea of what this number means, ideally, you want the right direction to be at 60%, and the wrong track figure to be below 20%. And as you can see, neither of these figures approached those thresholds. It suggests that there's a lot of disenchantment at the county level right now among your local voters.
Can I ask a question? You said what you're looking for is above 60, below 20. What does that mean, what we're looking for? But based on what data?
Those are ideal figures, which suggest a placid opinion environment, one where there's not a lot of turmoil. And this doesn't seem to be the case, at least as it relates to your district's views of the county. Now, I also included some recent survey work that I did at a statewide level among all Ohio voters, because it was in the field at about the same time, just to give you some comparative figures. Among Ohio voters, 50% said that Ohio was moving in the right direction. 24% said it had gotten off onto the wrong track. So you can see those figures are a little different from the way that district voters view the county. Also, when we asked about the Lorraine... Pardon me. When we asked about the Lorraine City School District, 42% said it was moving in the right direction. 43% said it had gotten off onto the wrong track. 4% volunteered mixed opinions, and 13% were unsure. So we're upside down. The right direction figure is lower than the wrong track figure. And again, we're not at those ideal thresholds of 60 and 20%. Among just parents, and let's talk about nomenclature for a second. Parents were people who, at the time of the survey, had a child enrolled in a Lorraine City School District school. Among them, 49% said the district was moving in the right direction. 42% said it had gotten off onto the wrong track. 5% volunteered mixed opinions, and 4% were unsure. So the numbers are a little better among parents. Parents are a little more optimistic. Nevertheless, these figures aren't quite where you ideally like them to be. When we looked at...
I'm sorry, Paul, can I ask another question? Was the way you phrased the question, just as you stated, "Going in the right direction, but it had gotten off on the wrong track"?
Right.
Because those could both be... I could say, yes, the district is going the right direction, but yes, we had gotten off on the wrong track. They mentioned two different things. Is that correct?
Uh, right.
We're going in a bad direction, we're going in a good direction is...
Going in the right direction or gotten off onto the wrong track. They seem to be diametric viewpoints. But in any event, as I said, these are fairly innocuous questions. Nevertheless, they give you some insight into the general opinion environment, the mood. Among non-parents, that is, people who, at the time of the survey, did not have a child enrolled in a district school, although they may be parents of children enrolled in other school systems through open enrollment or charter or online schools, or they may just be parents who, as children, are not yet of school age. And they also include people who don't, just don't have kids. Among them, 37% said the district was moving in the right direction, and 44% said it had gotten off onto the wrong track. So for parents, you've got a right direction net result of 7%. And for non-parents, at a right direction, a net result of negative seven percentage points. So that's a 14% differential. We also asked, "Do you think the property taxes in the area where you live are too high? Generally, pretty fair or too low." 40% said they're too high. 45% said they're pretty fair. 33% said too low, and 12% were unsure. As you can see, by looking at some select subgroup results, overall, 40% said it was too high. Among homeowners, 44% said it was too high, compared to just 31% of renters. And I want to mention that renters constitute about 30% of the electorate in this school district. So they're a substantial subgroup in terms of their sheer numbers. Among parents, it was 43%. Among non-parents, 39%. But those differences were not statistically significant. It just means when we did chi-square testing, there was an unacceptably high probability that those modest differences were just due to chance. Or more simply put, your views of the rate of taxation did not vary regardless of whether you were a parent or not. In 44052, 45% said taxes were too high. In 44053, the zip code, 38% said they were too high, and it was 33% in 44055. So there were substantial geographic splits based on zip codes. By the way, just so you get an appreciation for what this number means overall, ideally, you want the percentage of respondents saying too high to be at or below 40%. You're right about there. You're on the cusp a little bit, though. But we'll talk more about money in just a second, because it's going to raise itself again at another point in the results. We also wanted to do some basic indicators to test performance ratings for core activities. For example, we asked about the quality of education, and a total of 29% overall said the quality of education is excellent or good. 35% said it's fair. 27% said it's poor, very poor, and 9% were unsure. Looking at the performance of classroom teachers, 45% rated it as excellent or good. 24% said fair. 11% said poor, and 20% were unsure. And looking at the job the district's doing, spending tax money and managing the budget, 26% said excellent or good. 33% said fair. 27% said poor, very poor, and 14% were unsure. So you're upside down for that particular rating. Now, let me point out that it's not unusual for the performance rating for the job being done, spending tax money and managing the budget, to be lower than it is for the quality of education. And there are a couple of reasons for that. First and foremost, especially in Ohio, because of the Byzantine system of collecting and spending tax dollars. It's a very complex topic that people don't understand. But secondly, there aren't a lot of telltale signs to give people cues about performance. It's not like reading the state report card or hearing about graduation rates. You just don't get those kinds of indicators. So typically, this rating tends to lag behind the performance for the quality of education. That's not unusual. Now, just among parents, 39% said the quality of education was excellent or good. 37% said fair. 23% said poor, very poor, and 1% were unsure. 56% of parents said the job being done by the classroom teachers is excellent or good. 29% said fair. 12% said poor, very poor, and 3% were unsure. And looking at spending tax money and managing the budget, 27% said excellent or good. 43% said fair. 18% said poor, very poor, and 11% were unsure. These were all statistically significant differences when we compared them with non-parents. But I want to point out, only the performance rating for classroom teachers gets above the 50% majority threshold in terms of being rated excellent or good. Now, looking at facilities plans, before we tested some of the various aspects, we began with a preamble which said, "As you may or may not know, the Lorraine City School District is considering asking voters to approve additional funds to build a new alternative school building, update the stadium to ensure handicap accessibility, and expand preschool programs." Now, I would like to read you some of the specific aspects of the plan. After each one, please tell me whether you think it is a good or bad idea. For example, we asked, "Do you think it's a good or bad idea to make improvements to ensure that older facilities are accessible to people with disabilities?" 93% said it was a good idea. Now, what was the estimated margin of sampling error? 5% with rounding. So when you factor in that variability, this is nearly a universal sentiment. Just 6% said a bad idea. 2% were unsure. 85% said it was a good idea to make improvements that modernize the stadium, since it has not been renovated since the 1970s and is not in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Just 12% said it was a bad idea, and 3% were unsure. 82% said it was a good idea to complete the final aspects of the district's building program, so every student in the community is going to a school in a modern building with updated and advanced learning opportunities. Parody. Simply put. 13% said it was a bad idea. 4% were unsure. These were the first-tier aspects. Impressively, even the second-tier aspects all garnered a majority. For example, 81% said it was a good idea to create a full-day preschool program free of charge for three- and four-year-olds, for those children whose parents want to enroll them. 17% said it was a bad idea. 2% were unsure. 80% said it was a good idea to form community partnerships, so private organizations are paying for things like turf for the practice field. 16% said it was a bad idea, and 5% were unsure. 79% said it was a good idea to renovate and upgrade the high school stadium, so it's comparable to the new ones in other communities and can be used more by community members or recreation teams. This thing, it conjuncted there. By community members or recreation teams. 79%, 17% said it's a bad idea. 4% were unsure. And 66% said it's a good idea to build a new school building that can host career training programs, since the existing building is over 100 years old and the high school is not big enough to accommodate these needs. Just 29% said it was a bad idea, and 5% were unsure. This is really the idea that was the most feeble in terms of performance, and even that garnered an affirmative response from two-thirds of the respondents. So all of these ideas were very popular ones. Now, we also asked about funding, and we did it in a unique way. We did what's known as split sample testing. That is, we programmed the computer to randomly assign respondents to one of two versions of the same concept. Half the respondents were asked, "The district may ask voters for a $15 million bond issue of 1.4 mils, which would cost property owners about $26 yearly for each $50,000 of property value being collected for 28 years. If the election were held today and you were voting for it, would you vote for... And you were voting, would you vote for or against it?" 50% would vote for it. 42% against it. 8% were unsure. We also asked a very similar question to the other half of the respondents, but instead of asking about the cost per year, we instead asked about the cost per month. $2 per month. And just broke it down that way. And in that version, 49% are voting for it. 42% against. 9% are unsure. Those differences were not statistically significant. There was an unacceptably high probability that those differences were due to chance. And as you can see, those are almost identical results. So what I did, for the purposes of subgroup analysis, I consolidated the results, so we'd have larger sample sizes to work with when we were comparing the results. So for the consolidated results, 50% were voting for it. 41% against it. 9% were unsure. Here's how the data broke down by subgroups. Among parents, 72% were voting for it. Now, good and bad news. That's very robust support. And frankly, whenever a political campaign hires me to work on something like a bond issue for a campaign, that's always the first piece of data I look at, because that is a necessary condition for passage. If at least 62% of parents won't support an issue, you can never expect the general public to do so with enough support to expect success. Now, it's not a sufficient condition for passage, because there are others that are needed, but it's a necessary one. So that was good news. Bad news here is that parents are only about 22% of the electorate. In fact, when I was comparing the demographic data with the voter data, one of the things that I noticed is that you've got a lot of unregistered adults in this community. People who aren't registered to vote. Among non-parents, it's a different story. As you can see, 46% are voting for it. 48% against it. And 9% were unsure. 18- to 44-year-olds, 61% are voting for it. Drops down to 45% for 45- to 64-year-olds, and hits 36% for respondents 65 and older. Among white respondents, 44% are voting for it. Among African-American respondents, 44% are voting for it. And among Hispanic respondents, 73% were voting for it. And those were statistically significant differences, largely due to the substantial difference between Hispanic respondents and the other race groups. 52% of men are voting for it, compared to 48% of women. Those differences are not statistically significant. Once again, you could not hypothesize that differences in the results are due to gender. Among homeowners, 44% are voting for it. Among renters, whopping 61% are voting for it. Among respondents in the 44052 zip code, 49% are voting for it. Among respondents in the 44053 zip code, 45% are voting for it. Among respondents in the 44055 zip code, 55% are voting for it. What do you remember about those folks? We talked about them earlier. What was the defining characteristic of respondents in 44055? They had the lowest...
Opinion on the property tax value.
They had the lowest sensitivity to property taxation rates. Excellent. Among Democrats, 43% are voting for it. Among Republicans, 38% are voting for it. Among unaffiliated voters, 55% are voting for it. Let's talk about unaffiliated voters for a second. Who are they? They're people of other political parties or people who are just not registered. Ohio is somewhat unique in that becoming a registered partisan is dependent upon your participation in even your primary election at least once every four years. And the reason I say that is because it becomes somewhat of administrative designation. There are people who are not registered partisans who may consider themselves Republicans or Democrats. They may put up yard signs for their parties. They may go out and walk their precinct. But they're just not registered as partisans. What is another defining characteristic of unaffiliated voters? I just told you. This is important. They don't vote in primary elections.
They can't vote for candidates.
They don't. They just, they haven't voted in primary elections. They haven't voted in primary elections. So they're at 55%, and they vote in general elections.
They could, they could vote in...
Yes, they could if they wanted to. But they've become unaffiliated because they've not voted in the last four years. Among even your... I'm sorry, what?
Means they're not going to show up in the primary election.
Well, not in May.
They could. I worked for the Board of Elections. I...
No, they could, isn't it? They don't.
Yeah. They can.
They can, but they don't.
Right. Exactly. Even-year high propensity. This is kind of a low watermark compared to this, which is a high watermark. This is a low watermark, because these are people who voted in all of the last three even-year November general elections. That is, the presidential race, the previous gubernatorial race, and the presidential race before that. Among them, 35% are voting for it. 37%, pardon me, are voting for it. 58% is statistical majority against it. Among those people who vote in odd-year high propensity elections, that is, November of 2015, November of 2013, and November of 2011, people who voted in all three of those, again, a low watermark, because these are people who voted in all three. Among them, 35% for it, 60% against it, 5% unsure. And among those people who are high propensity voters, 33% are voting for it. 59% against it. Against it, 8% are unsure. What this tells me is that higher turnout would have a considerable impact on the outcome, a favorable one, as well. Low turnout, especially in scenarios like this, is going to be a more adverse set of conditions for which to put something on the ballot. Also, attitudinal subgroups. Among those people who said the quality of education was excellent or good, 52% are voting for it. Among those people who said the quality of education is poor or very poor, 53% are voting against it. Among those people who said the teachers were excellent or good, 55% are voting for it. Among those who said the teachers were poor or very poor, 66% are voting against it. And among those who said the job being done managing finances was excellent or good, 61% are voting for it. And among those who said the job being done managing finances was poor or very poor, 66% were voting against it. When we did something known as a measure of association, which is like correlation, although it's a little bit of a different calculation, this last piece of data was the most strongly associated with the outcome. So this attitudinal subgroup was probably most indicative of the cleavage that exists on an attitudinal level, irrespective of demographics. So if you're happier with the job being done managing finances, the budget, taxes, you're probably going to be more likely to support that issue. And those who are disenchanter are going to be less likely. Now, we also programmed the computer, so those people who said they were voting against it were asked, "What is the biggest reason that you would vote against it?" And we took all the verbatim responses that we recorded, and we aggregated them into categories. First, the most frequently occurring response is that taxes are too high. Do not want taxes to increase. Second plateau, cannot afford it. Financial reasons. It costs too much. 17% said the money will not be spent properly past mismanagement. 10% said they do not have children enrolled in district schools. Parents should pay. This is kind of a high number. I have more school districts as clients in Ohio than probably anyone else in my industry. And I can tell you from my experience that it's rare for that particular response to get into the two-digit range. On the third plateau, poor academics, poor performance, money should be spent differently. There are other priorities. 2% said they need more information. Do not know enough about it. Another 2% said the money is not needed or the improvements are not needed. Another 4% gave other extraneous reasons, and 4% were unsure. We also took all of those verbatim responses, and we ran them through a computer. And after we removed the common words like "kids" and "schools" and all the conjunctives like "and" and "the", we got a word frequency count. For example, the word "tax" or "taxes" appeared 72 times in the verbatim responses. The word "money" appeared 49 times in the verbatim responses. Word "high" appeared 24 times. The word "pay" appeared 23 times. The word "enough" 15 times. "Afford" 13 times. A lot, as in a lot, appeared 10 times. Let me give you a quick flavor for the comments that people made. One respondent said, "Because nobody's working, everybody's stretching and getting depressed." Another respondent said, when asked, "What is the biggest reason they vote against it?" "I don't think they're spending the money they have correctly. We've had some decent buildings we could have renovated instead of turning them down." Another respondent said, "Money doesn't solve problems. You can't keep spending money on things that aren't working." Another person said, "I'm getting taxed a lot, and from a lot of different directions. I'm retired and living on a fixed income." Another respondent said, "That would increase property tax. A lot of people are having a hard time paying current taxes." One last question we also asked is, "Regardless of how you might vote, do you agree or disagree that the improvements we discussed that are being considered by the Lorraine City School, for the Lorraine City School facilities, will improve the community's pride and reputation if they are implemented?" 77% agreed. 17% disagreed, and 6% were unsure. As I said, overall, 77% agree. Among four voters, 95% agree. Probably not surprising. They're willing to spend money to see this vision imposed upon the community. But even more than half of the against voters agreed with that sentiment. And remember what we talked about earlier, about how high the support was for the individual aspects. Stratospherically high. 93% for the top one. Among unsure voters, 78% said this was, that this would improve the community's pride and reputation. Among non-parents, 74%. And among those who say taxes were too high, even 77% of them agreed. Now, let me recap the findings very quickly. Here are the five things that I think are most important to take away from this. First and foremost, at this time, there's some disenchantment within the community, especially among non-parents who comprise the lion's share of the electorate and are essential to cultivate as a constituency for any new ideas that are being put forth. Second, the rate of taxes and other economic considerations are casting a pall over the community and may make it difficult for even the most worthy ideas or requests to garner voter approval. What did we say earlier? Taxes are too high. Cannot afford it. That's 49%. That's one out of every two responses, right there. While there is great ambivalence about financial management and the quality of education, even among parents, teachers appear to have good standing and presumably credibility that may be able to help bolster the district's image. They're probably good cheerleaders for anything for which you're trying to build support. Remember, they had the highest performance rating. All the various objectives that could be accomplished with the facility's bond issue appear to be ones that have strong support, but funding them may encounter substantial resistance due primarily to cost implications. And I say substantial resistance, because I don't want to be too histrionic here and say that the sky is falling. You're at 50%, but that's with everybody voting. But not everybody's going to vote. Now, so you're really on the cusp here, and it becomes a more difficult undertaking when you start looking at lower turnout that might depend on things that you can't control. And that's important to keep in mind. But philosophically, I don't believe that any election is a foregone conclusion, and any campaign is unwinnable. Nevertheless, you are facing some difficult challenges. Lastly, despite this, even naysayers seem to robustly agree that benefits would be accrued by such an initiative and appear to support them conceptually, suggesting they would meet important underlying community needs if they were accomplished. And to make my point, here is the people who said they're voting against the bond issue. 86% of them say it's a good idea to make improvements to ensure that older facilities are accessible to people with disabilities. 72% say it's a good idea to make improvements that modernize the stadium. And 68% say it's a good idea to complete the final aspects of the district's building plan. And these are the people who are the naysayers, presumably. Probably not our district critics. In fact, some of them may feel strongly about the district as you do. In fact, some of them may feel strongly about the district as you do. Nevertheless, for a lot of them, it's more pragmatic concern about their personal economic situations that could be driving them to be resistant to support something like this. Now, with that, oops. Now, with that, I'd like to open the floor. Jeff, do you have anything, do you want to add anything?
No, no, very thorough. Thank you.
Questions?
One question.
Sure.
If we were to put a levy on, what's the chances of that levy passing ignoring that data that you just presented?
Well, this is not a campaign survey, but as, as a voter survey, first and foremost, under the best conditions, you're at fifty percent. Again, that's with everyone voting. And when you consider the estimated margin of sampling error, you, you could be as low as forty-five percent to as high as fifty-five percent. Remember that pizza we talked about earlier? It was, it was a good analogy in this case. But one of the conditions that's probably going to be critically important is the participation of parents and younger voters. They seem to be most strongly supportive of this, and they frankly tend to have the most erratic voting behaviors. So, that, that makes it more difficult. It makes it an organizational challenge.
So, it's about a fifty-fifty chance that...
At best, at best. And I'm not sure that there is a, a particular election I could point to at this time, which holds the promise of getting such large turnout. Now, that could change in an instant, but it's, it's always difficult to use that crystal ball and look so far ahead. I want to mention, I should mention, too, that we asked that ballot simulation at the end, after they'd already been told, all of the various aspects, all of which performed very strong. So, there was a bit of a priming effect. So, it, it's very possible that baseline support is lower. Good question. Others?
You had, you had one slide that was broken down by age.
I think it was... That? That one?
Sixty-five. Okay, I just... Yep, that's the one I wanted to... I was just wondering how voter-wise, if, and there's no X on there right now, but voter-wise, how do we vote by age? And I wonder how that would actually break down.
This is an older community.
Yeah.
In terms of the electorate. And there are some disparities between the population and the electorate.
And you broke it down by zip code. Yeah. Net four, four, oh, five, three.
Other questions?
Yes, so, compared to, if you don't think first, the results you got here.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
With the results that you received, that you got in our district, compared to other districts, where would these, in terms of favorable or unfavorable? So, I know it's not an election piece, but if you...
Are you talking about deep performance rating?
Yeah. For a district who passed recently, who would have passed an initiative, what kind of results do they have? Do we, are we more, do we look more like a district who would have failed an initiative? Or...
There, there are times where issues pass or fail irrespective of the performance indicators. So, that's oftentimes not a good predictor, but when we started talking about this process, Jeff said he also wanted to get some information and some feedback about standing of the district as a public institution. So, I'm not sure that these necessarily have a lot of electoral implications, although there is some statistical associate, pardon me, some statistical association between the job spending, tax money, and support in opposition. So, those, those numbers do covariate somewhat. And covariance is one of the first steps in forming what's known as a causal hypothesis. But there are other steps as well.
So, then next question would be, based on where our numbers are now, are there, is there a campaign, a tactical, strategical thing that we could do to try to change those pieces? Does it say, is there an education issue here? Is there a perception issue? What would we engage in to move ourselves out of that fifty percent?
Well, I, I, this isn't a campaign survey, so I'm not sure this could adequately answer that question, but I can tell you just from looking at the data that engaging and involving seniors is probably going to result in a whole host of benefits. Older respondents in the community seem to be a little bit more disenchanted, and perhaps they're a bit more detached from the community, whereas younger voters and presumably parents and younger residents seem to be a little bit more upbeat and optimistic. So, I think that, that would probably be an important goal, but there may very well be others. That, that's a question better posed to a communication strategist if you were looking at an engagement campaign, if you were looking at a ballot issue campaign, talking to a campaign consultant. I always think of myself using a medical analogy, I'm the radiologist. My job's to figure out where the bones are broken. Other people like the strategists and the consultants, they're the ones who save the patients.
Can we go back a couple of slides? And when I read the questions, I read it one way. When I heard you say it, I interpreted them differently. Now, when you talk about right direction or off the wrong track, it's almost two different verb tenses. For example, we could have gotten off on the wrong track, but now we're going in the right direction. So, I guess my, was that the way they were phrased on there, or is that just...
I, I can look at it.
If you would, please, yeah. Because again, what I'm trying to assess, obviously, we've got the, the facilities piece, but the reason I asked for these questions, in essence, we want to find out if the community is supportive of the plan we're on. They, so that they...
They are supportive. I think, I don't think there's any question about that. Unambiguous, like, they liked all aspects of the idea. I don't want anyone to walk away with it.
Separate from, separate from the facilities. I mean, we're also looking at the academic piece. Are they supportive of the plan? And I guess the questions, I interpreted them differently when I heard you say them than I did when I read them. Because I, I, I would personally, if I were a community member, maybe answer yes to both questions. Yes, we got off the wrong track, but now we're on the right path.
I'll take a look at that. This is probably a better indicator of anything specific. I wouldn't read too much into those right direction, wrong track figures, other than just to get a general sense of discord.
For me, we were trying to evaluate whether or not they were supportive of the plan. So, I guess that was...
That would, I, I wouldn't use that particular data. That might, might be an inferential leap of sorts.
It was, I interpreted it differently, again, when I, before I heard you say it.
Again, the primary purpose of those question, of those questions, pardon me, is to acclimate respondents to the survey-taking process. Other questions?
Yeah. You said the results of, of the election could be based on the amount of people involved in the election. So, are you saying that...
Who turns out?
Yeah.
Who turns out?
Yeah. So, you're saying we have a better chance of passing it during an on-election year rather than an off-election?
A higher turnout election is probably going to be more likely to result in a higher level of support. I can say that unambiguous.
So, with his house seats and more, more...
Yeah. As you, if you think about it, those high turnout elections turn out, turn out a couple of key groups. Younger voters and unaffiliated voters. And those are both groups who are strongly supportive. And what happens is essentially these groups like presidential campaigns, the political parties, and all of these five-twenty-seven independent expenditure and groups, those PACs, do a lot of the organizational work for you, because they're getting those people out to vote. Other questions? All good ones.
So, do you suggest that the biggest factor contributing to negative response is money?
I, I think personal economic considerations weighs heavily on people's minds. As I said, it's casting a pall over the community, and that probably is tainting these ideas before people even really get a chance to really consider them.
And that was forty-nine percent of the forty-one percent that were the naysayers. Is that typical? What's, when you're...
That, that varies from situation to situation. But I, I would say that a primary consideration is an economic one. And the frustrating thing about that is, unlike reassuring people that you're doing a great job in the classroom and having teachers go out, when, when people are fearful of their long-term economic well-being, there's nothing you can do to dissuade them.
Except give them money back. Remember our discussion about the other type of tax piece where we looked at income tax with the give-back on property tax?
Ten years ago.
Yeah.
But keeping in mind that this is a citizen satisfaction survey by and large, you, they like the idea. They like it a lot.
Right.
And that's very reassuring. What you're doing, it really fits neatly within the framework of expectations about what people in the community want. It's just paying for it that is the sticking point.
You coming to my side?
Other questions? If not, then I'm going to send a copy to Dr. Graham, so he'll have this available. And my contact information is on the bottom, so if you've got any questions or want to chat with me, feel free to use my website to reach me, and I'll respond as soon thereafter as possible. Thank you for asking this.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
We have a guest, and at this time, we would welcome you to come and address the board.
Hi. My name's Jim Burgett. Been with the district, started my fifteenth year as a sub. And I had some concerns, and I mentioned to Dr. Graham when I came in. Again, I sub for this district, but I also sub for many districts. I go from Sandusky High School all the way out to Lakewood, and down south to JVS, and out to E. Hovey. So, my undergraduate is business ed, and I was a former teacher in various schools. And I live in the community. The thing that, that's, I see here where we need improvement, and I think it's going to be addressed coming into school year, is when we go, we don't offer our children a lot of financial literacy. They have their core subjects of science, math, history, English, but they're getting half-educated, in my opinion. We need financial literacy. And what I mean by that is, kids come to me, and they don't know what the stock market is, they don't know how to invest, they don't know how to fill out a resume, they don't know how to do a tax return, they don't know about workman's compensation. They're clueless when they go out into the real world. Yeah, they know, there's nothing wrong with the English, nothing wrong with the science, nothing wrong with the social studies, et cetera, et cetera. However, they need to have that aspect taught to them. When I go to Bay Village, I work at Bay Village High School, they brought a business teacher out of industry. His name's Thornsberry, does a nice job. He teaches the kids about investments, entrepreneurship, how to set up a business. Avon Lake, another district, they have a whole career program set up on business. They bring outside speakers in. We could bring out outside speakers in to our school here, for example, out of the insurance industry, we, out of the banking industry. You could bring certified financial planners. In other words, teach the kids how to be street, streetwise. I mentioned to the kids at school, and I have a graph, if you would invest at $10,000 in the stock market in nineteen fifty, which would be about $100,000 today, that $10,000 would be about $13 million just sitting on it. Through capital gains, through dividends, and, and reinvesting back in the stock market. It's unbelievable. Well, they say to me, "Teach us how it's done." I said, "I can guarantee everybody in this room, if you do exactly what I tell you and pay yourself, you can become a millionaire." Stock market historically pays between six and eight percent since the nineteen twenties. I said, "You can't put your money in a bank and get that rate of return." Wow. Teach us how to do it. Teach us how to do it. So, I get a lot of kids, and it's across the broad spectrum, from the kids that are taking college-level classes all the way down to special ed kids, that want to learn how to do this. So, if we, as a district, can look at this and address this, and I think it's going to be done this coming school year, you need a person that's going to be a dynamic teacher. If you give a teacher that comes in and passes out worksheets, that's not going to do it. If you get somebody that can come in at streetwise and understands how things work in the real world, it's going to make more of an impression. So, that's my concern. Sandusky has a proud program where they actually take the kids at some work-study, they go out into the Sandusky community, and they actually get the kids jobs, they teach them how to interview, they teach them how to do resumes, what to, what should be expected when they go out into the job field. So, I, I see this all over. And it's part of our, what we should probably do is get this going and actually make it like a compulsory subject that they need to take before they leave the high school. I wouldn't do it as a freshman or sophomore, they're too young yet, but when they're their senior year and they're facing the real world and they're going to graduate, okay, what do I do after June? So, that's something that should be, in my opinion, just a mandatory subject where they actually get that information and they know, at least they know about it. I was at E. Hovey. I had a kid, and he was in diesel mechanics at Milan. I was working there. He says, "Well, Mr. Burgett, I don't know why I got to learn this accounting." Guy says, "I already know how to do, you know, change tires, I can do a front end on a, on a truck." And I said, "Well, what do you want to do?" He says, "Well, I want to be entrepreneur." I said, "Well, in all due respect, you only know half your business, so what do you mean?" I says, "Who's going to do your payroll? Who's going to do your federal unemployment? Who's going to do your workman's compensation? You can go right down the list." "Oh, oh, I didn't think about that." So, these are things that just needs to be incorporated. You don't have to go into great detail, but at least have, the kids have an idea, "Oh, I remember learning about this. Okay, I'm familiar with a 401K. I'm familiar with a Roth IRA." So, I want to just make sure that it gets pushed out a lot. And it makes a perfect juxtapost between the core subjects, which you need, which are life-giving, as well as the financial literacy, which is also life-giving. So...
And we talked a little bit before the board meeting, and I apologize, I escorted our guest out, but we spoke earlier. And financial literacy is something all school districts require to do, and we do it. But I also mentioned that there's, we have a superintendent student advisory council, and I meet with students on a regular basis, and we have a few from each grade, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. And we talk about how to make the school district better, and that's one of the things they brought up. And they talked about a higher level of financial literacy in terms of offerings. They talked about, you know, how to apply for a job and all the different things. And I think the way they summarize it is, we need to know how to be adults, and this is all part of that aspect. So, we are doing, we've been doing some things, we'll do more things next year, and improve the soft skills along with the financial skills. And again, we're going to continue to grow that. But I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Yeah, it's, it's perfect. I can tell you a story, and I don't want to take a lot of time up, but there was a guy applying for UPS position. He was dressed up in a suit. He was pulled out by UPS manager right away as a driver. We wanted to interview him, because he had enough respect for himself and the position he was applying for by dressing in a suit. The other guys wore jeans, baggy pants. And I mentioned to the kids, I said, "People draw within seven seconds an opinion of you, whether it's right or wrong, but they've got an opinion of who you are or what you are." So, how you look, how you present yourself is very critical. So, you guys know where I'm coming from. The other thing is, since this is my fifteenth year starting, I'm at the same salary since the last fifteen years. And Jeff mentioned he's text Carol.
Retired, right?
Yeah, retired, yeah. It's, Avon Lake has bumped it up $15. Bay Village has bumped it up $17. Vermillion went from seven, seventy-eight to ninety now. So, everybody's pushing up. And you're a college graduate, and you've got the responsibility of kids, and you're making slightly above a cleaner. Yeah. Okay.
All right. Thanks for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you. Sure. This time, since there is nothing else, I would like a motion to suspend the rest of the agenda. I'm supposed to ask any questions for nothing? We're supposed to ask any questions for nothing.
Spot.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. And our next meeting is on Monday. What's the date?
July 3rd.
July 3rd.
July 3rd, right here. It'll be a brief one, but we have some action items we need to address at, do you want to move the time up? You'd be out of town? All right, can we, we don't have school that day, there's, can we, we have enough time, can we check and see? Let's just, let's make, what, like a noon meeting or something?
Do we already advertise?
We already advertise it for the regular time and we can switch it because it wouldn't be a special meeting then.
Anytime. Yeah, we have plenty of time, yeah. Yeah, yeah, because I don't want to hang around waiting for 6:30.
Okay.
And then have a meeting that's going to be expedited that quickly, so.
We can pull it back and then send that.
So yeah, let's check with Tony. So since we're going to make that call tomorrow, I'll give Tony a call and Mark's not going to be here anyway. Am I here? Wait a minute, when do I leave? I'll leave on the 4th or something. Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll send the announcement out.
Okay.
All right.
So wait to hear from you after then?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Spot.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.